The February 2018 meeting of the City of Scranton zoning hearing board will now come into order. Will the secretary please take role?
Mr. Gaddens?
Here.
Mr. Marks?
Here.
Ms. Newcomb?
Here.
Mr. Palmetessa?
Here.
Chairman O'Neal?
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would it be out of order to ask for like a moment of peace for to honor the family that one of our zoning board members have lost? Is that out of line?
No.
I said is it okay if we get a moment before that we start the meeting, a moment of peace for to honor Sean Walsh's family members?
Sure.
Certainly.
In accordance with Pennsylvania State Sunshine law, this board shall render its decision on each case either at the end of each hearing or within forty-five days of the hearing. If you are given testimony in a case, please come to the podium, raise your right hand, and wait to be sworn in. After being sworn in, state your name and address and proceed with your testimony. Also, anyone giving testimony who does not become a party to the case may obtain a written decision from the zoning office. I also have two announcements of law. If you are granted a variance or a special exception, you must wait thirty days from the date of our decision to obtain the necessary permits to start work. However, you may obtain permits sooner by signing a waiver that any work done during the thirty-day period is at your own risk. A favorable decision by the zoning board shall expire twelve months from the date of said authorization. In accordance with Section 111 of the zoning ordinance, if you fail to obtain the necessary permits or do not comply with any or all the conditions of said authorization, you must seek a special exemption. Remarks?
Yes, I just want to make some remarks about the Washburn Street daycare that we're reading about. I really don't know what our options are, but they've not been complying with their agreed-upon parking lot. They've been parking their parking lot and they've been causing lots of traffic hazards. And I understand that they're not paved yet, but as far as I know, they were still told that they had to use the parking lot to park. So I don't know because it's they've been doing it since day one and it's been going on for months. So what could we do about that?
As a point of reference, based on a telephone call from Ms. Newcomb, I did go over to the location and informed them of the issues that you just raised. The person that was there was the manager. The owners were not there. I left a specific message for them to call me to address these issues and they did not. And she wasn't very helpful, to say the least. So that was the follow-up that took place with me.
Did we, just to refresh my memory, if anyone knows, when they came before us the second time and we required that parking lot across the street, did they had purchased that parking lot at that time or was it a pending sale?
To the best of my knowledge, they'd purchased it.
Is it something we can look into, make sure that they purchased it? Because that could be the holdup that they never purchased it and so they unable to use that lot. And I agree with Ms. Newcomb that I think we need to do a follow-up on this.
I do too. It's dangerous.
Thank you.
So I will check out the parking lot situation and with the board's okay, I'll send them a letter at least starting any kind of enforcement process.
Yeah, if you find a violation, then you can send them a notice violation letter.
Yes.
Okay.
And then I'll just copy the board on whatever I send.
I'll make a motion that we send a letter?
I'll second it.
Mr. Gaddens?
Yes.
Assuming Jack finds a violation?
Correct.
Yes.
Pending his inspection, yes.
Just for the record, the day that I was over there, I could see violations. But I'll go back over before I do anything.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Gaddens?
Yes.
Mr. Marks?
Yes.
Ms. Newcomb?
Yes.
Mr. Palmetessa?
Yes.
Chairman O'Neal?
Yes. With a vote five to zero, it's been granted.
And I have one item. We're supposed to reorganize at our meeting tonight and I'd like to make a motion that we postpone until next month when we have Sean Walsh come back and we have a full voting board. On the question?
Nope, I'll second the motion.
Mr. Gaddens?
Yes.
Mr. Marks?
Yes.
Ms. Newcomb?
Yes.
Mr. Palmetessa?
Yes.
Chairman O'Neal?
Yes, with a vote five to zero, it'll take place next month. Okay, anybody else? Jack, you want to attest to the postings?
Yes, thank you. I, Jack Swinney, zoning officer for the city of Scranton, solemnly swear that I posted the following premises with a notice of a zoning hearing in reference to tonight's Location number one is sixteen twenty North Kaiser Avenue. Number two is six twenty-eight Prospect Avenue. They were originally posted on February first, two thousand and eighteen. The Kaiser Avenue address had to be reposted on February fifth because someone took the signs down the first time. So anyway, they were posted on February first and February fifth of two thousand and eighteen.
Okay. You want to call the first case?
First case, Arthur Williams, sixteen twenty North Kaiser Avenue.
Okay. Here you go. Okay, sir, do you want to raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
State your name and address, please.
Arthur Williams. I live in Laquanola, thirteen sixty-seven Post Hill Road in Laquanola, PA.
Okay, you can proceed.
All right. I'm asking for a variance on a property I have at sixteen twenty North Kaiser Avenue. I have papers in front of me that I didn't want to put small car lot there. I had tore a nice old house down that I couldn't rent anymore due to the traffic on Kaiser Avenue. And the last person that rented it took off in the middle of winter and left all the pipes break and like I gave up after that one. So we tore the house down and it's an empty lot and I'd like to open up a small car lot on it. And I have a tire shop behind that. So but I just wanted to ask for a variance, just open a small car lot.
So at the most, you're going to say you're going to have ten cars there for sale at one time?
Yes.
Will you be storing any cars there that aren't, we'll say, in the sales area?
No, we don't have any garage facilities there. I do have a garage behind that lot, though.
So any repairs you'll be doing, you'll be doing at your entire business?
At the shop.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, it'll be just a car lot, clean operation.
You haven't came in front of the board before, but that's my experience of it. Anytime we grant a car lot, we'll say a number and then it multiplies by a few factors. So you know, if it is granted, I can't, you know, speak for everybody else, but the number has to be the same as what we're saying. You know what I mean? Like, so we don't want to come back, ask Jack, we're getting, you know, letters and calls from people that there's twenty-two cars on the lot jammed and, you know.
Exactly what I was going to say.
You know, so that's because this happens all the time. You start to do well and then there's more and more and more and more and more cars, you know?
The parking should be kept with no problem at ten because like we have the huge garage behind it. So I know some of these other places, they buy them, they keep buying them and they keep buying them and they're not selling. And the ones that they're all parked out there now, the ones that aren't ready to be sold. So now you've got double. So I shouldn't have that problem because I have the garage in the back is forty by sixty-two. You know, there's room for thirty cars inside and then there's a little garage on the side of that twenty-five by thirty, so.
And you are aware that that particular location on Kaiser is probably the most congested section of Kaiser Avenue?
I've been there thirty years.
Yeah, and I worry because A, there's a car lot right across the street that we approved a couple of years ago and then there's car lots, every other lot on Kaiser Avenue is a car lot.
Yeah, well, I own the one, the car lot next to it for thirty years and I used to have one of auto and truck sales there for thirty years.
I just want to make sure that you don't contribute to that congestion.
Might, as you can see me getting up, I gave up the heavy trucks and stuff. So business and I have sold that piece and I still own this piece here.
Anyone else here to give testimony?
Yes.
Okay. Want to raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay, state your name and address, please.
Patrick Tig. I'm here representing or helping to represent concerns of my father-in-law, John Hoven. And the address is sixteen twenty-two Kaiser Ave, next door to a proposed car lot.
Okay.
And I'm prepared, I don't know if you guys would accept it, some concerns that we have. We're not opposed to the car lot. We have some concerns that you touched upon and then other concerns too. Mr. Hoven, my father-in-law, if it's a four-generation owned home that they have there, and we've seen a lot of change on Kaiser Ave, and we understand that it's a busy area and change happens, we just want to make sure that it's done in the right manner. And we can maybe narrow down some of the term of car lot because it's a pretty wide, widely used, I'm sorry for that. And so I tried to expedite the process. I tried to just give bullet points. If you guys have any specific questions on any of the points, we are pro-business. I own my own business and we love to see business. Some of the concerns that we have is that, you know, it seems to me like we earlier, he was talking about two lots. This is only one lot. And he has a forty by sixty-two garage, then he has another twenty-five by thirty garage, then he wants to stuff ten cars there. And so we're concerned about a layout. We'd like to see a layout or have you guys see a layout. I feel like a variance would be great, but if we had a layout that we could say, okay, a surveyor constructed this layout and has designated that these split spots would accommodate those, that many vehicles. And so now, of course, while I'm talking in the five minutes, I'm not going to have time to review the layout.
There's no five-minute limit. This isn't a city council.
Oh, okay. Great. Because not that I want to take a long time. I guess we want to be neighborly and we think that it's great if he wants to put a car lot in, like you were talking earlier, there's a car lot across the street, there's one right across the alley, you know, there's many car lots and we know that variances are happening. So we have to be realistic. But I think we also owe it to the neighbors who have been there since nineteen forty-five and on the fourth generation to be responsible that, you know, we're not, he had mentioned that he had a truck and I think that a lot of you folks probably have been by there and he really packed that lot with a lot of trucks, some of them, and we all know how this goes, there's priorities, and then, I'm sorry, I was hitting a not-realization. I'm new at this. We all know that, you know, sometimes you get new inventory and it seems that the first in is the first out. And so the old stuff sets and it sets forever. So one of my points is like, okay, so he's going to have a used car lot. How close to the road can he park? Because that's a real problem. He had, back when the house was there, he would park trucks and I brought some photos and trailers and he'd park them right out by the road. And my sister-in-law, who lives there now, had a hard time getting out. And so when we approached a reasonable way of how to correct that, it just wasn't easily fixed. And so my concern, I think all my concerns could be alleviated really fast if we just agreed to reasonable terms. And so like, you know, ten feet from the curb, I think, is reasonable. But I think too, it would be nice to have a designated access. He, you know, wants to put all these ten cars, have these big buildings, but where is the designated access? And then the reason why that concerns us is because oftentimes, if you just look across the street from the house, these cars are parked in such a way, there's really no customer parking. And so will they be parking in my sister-in-law's driveway? Who knows? Is, you know, is that going to block her access? So that's not really neighborly. So I feel like to do the neighborly thing, we want the car lot. We have no problem with it. It's nice that that old dilapidated house is gone. We're thrilled about that. But when he tore down the house, he had done some stuff, like he raised up the grade four foot, knocked down the fence that encroaches on our land, took the retaining wall that my father-in-law's dad built in nineteen forty-five and knocked it over. So there's like.
Well, was that all addressed through the city or?
Well, the reason why I'm here and not Mr. Hoven is because we just want to be good people and reasonable and nice. So no, it wasn't, but at that.
Well, you obviously can't take someone's wall down. Do you know what I mean? It's a dividing wall, it has to be agreed upon in that.
I agree. And so it wasn't that big of a deal, but now he wants a car lot and it's like, where's it in? You know, so now we're here, we're going to say, okay, can we fix the wall? Can we take the dirt back onto your property? Could you maybe have it surveyed again or, you know, have a surveyor lay it all out and explain to me how you're going to fit ten cars, customer parking, entrance, exit? I mean, these big sixty-two, you know, this is, this is big buildings he has on this. I don't see how it's all going to happen. But if he can make it happen and somebody that knows about flow and how safety works, I think that, fine, if that, but I'm not the talented person. I'm not a surveyor, I'm not an engineer where I can say, yeah.
No, you bring up valid points. That building was, you know, in disarray for years and years.
Long time. And we put complaints in and we talked and it just went nowhere. And finally, he did the right thing and he tore it down and we are just ecstatic that it's gone because it was really bad. And we're really good people. We just love the area. We want to see the area do good business, be smart, you know, designs, you know, constructively where he wins and we win.
Well, and there has to be setbacks off of your property and stuff.
There has to be, but it's not, I can tell you this, for one hundred percent certainty, he's past his property line. He didn't care. He just knocked down walls, fences. I have pictures.
We're here, let me hear his point on that and so we could hear.
I was working with your father-in-law on that and I said, do you want me to clean?
Yeah, could you speak into the microphone, sir?
Okay, thank you.
Here's your agenda, guys. I have a question for, I don't know how to do this, but like this is the fence here that you can see, there's dirt that has flowed down. Now, he built up his property four foot from where it used to exist without a retaining wall.
Well, Jack, that's to the city planning, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
And so then like you can see here where he had his sign, he had cements taken this out, that used to have wood in it and so you can't really see. And then you can see tires and he's got so many tires. He has this used car, used tire replacement at that, which listen, we're business, we like business, but you have to do it like outside where mosquitoes are, it's insane to go in the backyard. The mosquitoes are out of control. So like, it's one thing if you're going to be a business owner, let's do it right. And so here's the building now, you can see there's broken windows, there's like, it just hasn't been loved. And so if you don't love a property, it's a real concern. And then what winds up happening, and I think that everyone here knows, and that's the reason for you guys to be here, because you care, is good people leave. And the way you get is a whole bunch of people that just don't care, encroach on other people's property, knock down their retaining walls, push over their fences, you know, and then whatever, slap up, you know, a car lot. And then he's talking about, okay, he had a used car place with a rental, it's a residential house. Now is he going to have a garage, a used car lot, a detail shop? I mean, where's the end? It's just a little lot.
Give him a moment. Before you start, what is, is this a separate lot? Are these actually two different lots, the lot the house was on, the lot your business on? Are they separated, like in the tax rolls? Are they two separate properties?
Oh, it's one property.
Oh, one property. What's the total depth of the property?
Excuse me?
The total depth of the property coming in. I can't read it on the sheet here.
I believe it's one ninety-six.
Okay, thank you.
So what, I don't have any vision, but this is important. This was the type of trailer he parked right smack to the Kaiser Ave. Now, how are we supposed to see safely in and out? I mean, because who does this? And so I don't think it's intentional, but now that, you know, these trannies and the property feel like at least we should have serious consideration on how we do this where it's leaving there.
Go ahead, sir.
All right. When I tore the house down and was working back there, I had talked to Mr. Hoven and there was all kinds of crappy trees growing up through there. And I asked him if it was okay to tear all those downs and I took the fence out because the trees were grown through the fence. He said it was okay. And he said he would put the fence back even because he was happy to have the trees down. I did stack some of the stones back up and stuff there. Now, the tree lines in the back, there's trees growing up from back of my property that are probably on his property too, because he has an old garage down the back that he keeps a car in and stuff that I'm trying to keep it as clean with that, but I, he had an old car parked, a junk car parked in there for a long time. I even bought it off him. Well, like, I have no problem. We were talking, fine. And the one time I had parked the car too close, he called over and told us like, my daughter can't pull out. Could you move, she can't see. I says, absolutely. And I moved the one so she can nose up. Because just recently, they did Kaiser Avenue over and moved everything back into the yards farther, the curbs. So now you don't have, you can't stick your front end out anymore like you used to or you're going to lose it, right, over there. So there was a problem. He called and I moved that one van that was over there. And I don't know what pictures you have there, you didn't show them to me, but and on the plans here, I just wanted to keep ten feet away so she can come up and see going down the road. I don't have any problem either.
Ten, I don't.
Ten feet from.
Ten feet from the property line?
From the property line over where the first car started going down. So this way she could see going down the road.
Okay, but you see, my concern now that I'm seeing this plan and I have a second to look at it is, is, okay, so you keep ten feet away, but ten feet ain't enough. I mean, if I do.
You have to speak into the microphone, sir.
Oh, okay. He's saying on his plan, if everyone has a, I don't know if they do or not, but if you guys see the plan, I'm looking at the plan here where he's going to park his cars and so here's the property line. Does everyone have a plan? Okay. And he's saying he's going to stay ten feet away, but then the next car is going to be snug up against Kaiser Ave. That, to me, shouldn't be. I mean, if I, I'm a builder, I go and want to build on a lot, they make me have a hundred foot in Wayne County. How is it that you get ten feet here? That doesn't seem realistic to be safe. So somehow we have to come together, whereas that front row of cars, we just have to find a fair distance to keep it off the curb.
Let me ask you a question. Do you have a driveway on the other side of that boundary line?
Yes, there is. That's a good question and the pictures reflect it. There is a driveway, that's the only driveway, you have to go on that driveway to park in the back of our property or Mr. Hoven's property.
The driveway to the little garage, correct?
To the little garage, yes, yes, it is. And it's very, it's very tight there and so.
Maybe, maybe I can try to clean some of this stuff up.
Okay.
Just by reading through the zoning ordinance itself. It talks about no vehicle will be displayed in such a way that it would be on the existing right-of-way or in the site triangle, we're talking Theodore Street there, in the site triangle that you would need to be safely be able to look up and down Kaiser Avenue. That's one of the requirements that if this board grants this, these got to.
Follow.
Follow. His parking, the ordinance talks about one for every fifteen vehicles displayed plus one for each employee. He's showing six customer parking, so he has more than sufficient customer parking in accordance with our ordinance.
If it's accurate.
Now, he does have to have an eight-foot buffer on any side that borders a residential lot, which obviously bordering your land, he's got to have an eight-foot buffer there. That eight-foot buffer can be any kind of, what are they, arborvitus trees or different types of trees that are allowed in the ordinance. It's right in the ordinance, that's worth, what type of vegetation can go in that eight-foot buffer. But there has to be an eight-foot buffer away from the lot line that he can't use for anything other than the vegetation. It does talk about all required parking will be paved, graded to prevent erosion. Now, that's, that part of it has to go before the planning commission, I believe. They do the inspection as to erosion and water runoff and things like that. So that's, again, that would be one of the conditions he would have to meet before he could actually occupy it as a parking lot. On your list, you had lighting and I don't think we addressed the lighting, so maybe Mr. Williams could address the lighting.
Also, number one, I didn't, I don't remember, recall if we got to this detail shop. Did you, I don't, I was probably reading the rest of the list when that occurred.
I didn't talk about it. I didn't go in order, but I appreciate the question and so my concern is, is the detail shop. Now, people think, oh, great, he's going to, you know, make them look nice and we want that. The problem is, a lot of times, used car facilities are bringing in cars that need a lot of detailing and typically to bring these cars up to standard, they take chemicals and the chemicals concern us. And so we would ask this board to consider putting limitations on outside cleaning without a recycling system. And so, you know, especially engines and transmissions, I mean, you're talking grease, these things need to be broke down. Simple water doesn't work. And so I know it's a simple car lot, but there's so many facets to a car lot that this little lot, I don't know how much it can handle.
I think his major concerns are, there was a building on that for however many years that was not pleasing to the eye. The building right now that you have has broken windows and stuff. I always preach this, if you're neighborly, you know, between both you guys, I'm sure it could be worked out. And he's just concerned it's not going to look, you know, aesthetically pleasing to himself and his family. I don't think either one of you guys are being not reasonable, but I said, you know, maybe you spruce the property up a little bit.
That's right.
You know, something like that, you know, he might not even be here today.
The last tenant started to paint and he put this god-awful red on it and it's going to get a makeover as soon as the weather breaks because it is terrible looking.
Well, it's not, it's not just paint, though. It's windows.
Yeah.
Like the roof, literally, there was no shingles on his house. And I know he said tenants, but that's not a tenant issue, okay? I feel like you guys deal with rentals all the time. We all know it comes back to the owner, okay? I do rentals myself and so, listen, if I don't stay on my tenants, yeah. I do rentals myself, and so, listen, if I don't stay on my tenants, yeah, will some of them take advantage? Of course they will. But it's my responsibility to make sure that they're following the terms of the lease. And if they're not, it's my responsibility to do something about it. He did nothing. He let it get worse and worse. It's a huge concern. If he wants to put a car lot in, we really have to put a huge restriction on making sure that he does follow through with general decent business practices. And, and we have no problems. Like you said, he did talk to Mr. Hoven. I know that Mr. Hoven said he could cut those shrubs out. And Mr. Hoven did, because he's a nice guy, again, say, "Oh, I put, I could put back the fence if it gets knocked down." Not realizing he was gonna keep dirt there. I mean, what, he's supposed to go out there with a pick and take the dirt away? Like, that's silliness. Who does that to a neighbor? To me, that's ridiculous.
Attorney Pendatar, I have a question, maybe you can answer. This is all, according to the applicant, this is all one lot. Now, he has an existing business on there. So, one of the concerns I, I'm reading here is the storage of vehicles. Can we control the storage of vehicles on the existing property that's there? So in other words, you can't take the vehicles off the front and store them in the back? Because that, that business that's existing now, does it fall under this variance since it's all one property?
The business that exists now would be grandfathered in. So whatever he can, he could have done for the tire shop or whatever he's running back there, he can continue to do.
That's a great question. And I have a question myself. I'm curious to know, how come it is that there should be more than one business operating on this little lot?
Well, that's the, that's part of the variance issue.
Yeah, I, I, I just feel like, oh, so you have a little space, we have to do something with it? Why doesn't he pick a business? If he wants a car lot, make it all a car lot. If he wants a garage, make it all a garage. Like, why do we need so many different businesses on one little lot?
Well, I mean, that, that's his prerogative to do.
Yeah, that's his constitutional right.
This is the United States, so I mean, you have the option to do things like this. I mean, it's his land, he can, he can develop the way he wants to develop it as long as he's in compliance with the, the rules and regulations, so...
And so, I guess my thought is, is then, I wish that we didn't give him the variance, because I feel like he already has a business. He's already operating a business there. And to grow a business on a little lot like that seems like it's a lot.
Dan and Jack, I, I have a question, because I don't think we ever actually went over this before. And Bob brings up the point too. If there's already one business on there, how are we granting something for an additional business?
Right.
You're, you're allowed to do that.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that's...
The bathroom and the, and the used facilities that are there.
Yeah, and the, and the garage on the back.
Okay, you're, you're definitely, you could see just by the picture, you've got to play this, I mean, I would've come there for no reason to purchase a vehicle if I pulled in here. So obviously, you have some type of game plan.
Yeah, that's all gonna get repainted and the windows fixed up, but, uh, just the car lot is separate from the, the, the shop, that's all. Uh, according to Pendat, with getting a, a dealer's license, it's, you know, you have to have a separate office for that, so many spaces, and such and such.
To get a new license?
Yes. So, we have to first get approved for that and then have, Pendat, so, and then the dealer association, uh, Pendat has to approve it then after that. But him asking about the cleaners and stuff, everything is water-based oil cleaning. Uh, that property is, uh, the toxic dump of Scranton. There was 30,000, 300 million gallons of toxic waste dumped down there at one time through a bore hole outside from Mr. Lovell back in the days and stuff like that. But, you know, if, if any dirt went over, he should've contacted me. He, I, he had my number, and I, and I stopped down there very frequently. I seen him the other day down there.
Is these, this picture right here?
Yes.
I see a tree line back there. Are they half your trees, half his trees? Is that how that is, or...
I didn't, I didn't see the picture, so I can't.
I guess my question to you, sir, is, your little garage?
Yes.
Right there. Does that property go straight back?
So, this is the retaining wall here, and, and I don't really answer that question. And that's why I proposed that it be surveyed, like the line be surveyed, because he's talking about in his plot plan that he's gonna stay 10 feet from our line. But he, he doesn't really know where the line is. And I know that Mr. Hoven's dad built that wall in 1945. But how much knowledge he knew, I never met the man. When he built the wall, did he build it on Mr. Hoven's now land? Or did he build it? I don't know.
Well, it is what it is, it's where it is now.
It's where it is now. So to answer your question accurately, it's presumably very close.
A straight line back.
Yes, very close. And so, you know, the businesses on, on, and making them separate. I wanted to, like, talk about that for a second, sorry about that. It, it's interesting to me, like, I went to school for four years to become a new car, uh, franchise owner. And so, in a franchise, you have all these facilities under one roof. And so, you're probably wondering, well, what does that have to do with anything? I'm just curious, why is he separating it? We all know that the garage is going to do his work. We all know that he's saying he has a bathroom down back. So obviously, that question was phrased that way because he's going to have his customers for the car lot use the bathroom down back. And so, it seems like it's all one business, right? But yet, he's saying it's two. And so, I'm just wondering, like, how big does a little lot need to be? It's a little lot. And he's saying it's all water-based cleaners. I have a detail, I'm partners with a detailer up in Wayne County. Listen, none of it's water-based cleaners. I'd love to know what water-based cleaner he's using, but I'll tell you, in order to do a true detail, you're not using water-based cleaners. You're just not. You're using chemicals, acids, that's what takes to do a good detailed job on a used vehicle. Now, you guys all probably driving nice, clean cars. I, I mean, this, this guy, if you ever went, drove by Kaiser Avenue and looked at his 30 years of business, he wasn't buying new stuff. He was buying older stuff, trying to bring them back to life. I can resonate with that, because for 30 years, my folks have been in the car business. I get the car business. The problem is, is, is those cleaners are a huge problem. I feel like the cleaning should be only limited to a spot where it's being treated. Meaning, you put those cleaners and chemicals onto that vehicle and then rinse it off with no recycler under it, those chemicals are going down into the ground. Okay, so it was a super fun. We don't wanna make it worse. Thank you.
I, I, I just wanted to make this statement. You said something before about restrictions.
Yeah.
Us as a board, and going back to what he said about we've made restrictions before, the car lots that come before us have not complied with any of those restrictions. So, if you wanna, if you wanna make restrictions, I mean, that's between the two of you, but the restrictions need to be followed up on. If, if you make a restriction and you see that he's not going by it, a lot of the problem is, some, sometimes people, they don't know who to complain to, there's a, there's a problem. I, I just happen to know the right people to complain to, but a lot of people don't. So when I have a restriction, it's gonna have to be something that you're gonna follow up on if it happens to be broken.
I love how you think. I, I agree with that. That's why I recommended to have like a tiered system set out before you guys give an approval. That way, it, it can be enforced with some grit. Because to just generally say, oh, you can only have 10 cars, well, if he puts 12, who do we complain to and how quick is that gonna be addressed? Whereas if you have a tiered system saying, listen, first time, it's a warning, second time, it's 500 bucks, third time, it's a thousand, or, I don't, I'm not telling you how to structure because that's not my job, but I just wanted to say, if we could collectively all just agree, I think we could do it tonight fairly quick.
Well, there's a couple other things too, that, um, both you guys seem to agree on, the property line. I don't know if there's a clear-cut property line, so that would have to go in front of, well, you have to get it surveyed first, and then the parking lot itself would have to go in front of the city planning commission too, just make sure...
I agree. I, I like how you think too. I think that the first step in any variance is, you should have it surveyed, because he should know where his property line is. Now, Mr. Hoven...
Well, both of you guys should know where your property line is.
Well, Mr. Hoven says the property line is where the retaining wall is. But me, as an outsider, I say, why not? He wants to make the variance, I don't. He doesn't.
You disagree with where the property line is?
Yeah, I think that that should be staked out.
Do you disagree with where the property line is?
Absolutely, stake it out.
We're not disagreeing where the property line is, though. I, I don't see a problem with it.
You're saying that you disagree where the property line is.
I, I'm saying that it should...
You're saying that you...
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying to you.
Okay, so to clarify, what I would like to do is, is to have the line surveyed, just the line between us, so then it's clear. There's no, the problem is, is you can see where the fence has been pushed over. You can see where the retain...
Hold on, hold on one second. So, so Dan, in a case like that, where the property line is in question?
Not our problem. If they, if they wanna jointly get a survey, that's fine, but that's not our problem.
Oh, okay.
But I, I wonder though if we could make it a stipulation. That's why I put it there, is, it, to me, like, he's asking for a variance. I think that it's only fair to say, okay, here's a neighbor, they have 20 points. If you can resolve these 20 points, you get your variance. If you can't, then fine.
Well, our, our only decision here has to be whether he has enough room for the five cars across and the eight-foot buffer. Whether that means he needs 58 feet or 65 feet, doesn't matter, as long as he has enough room for five cars and, and an eight-foot buffer. Where exactly the, the line is beyond that, not our problem. If you guys wanna argue over that, or you wanna jointly hire a surveyor to fi, figure that out, that's fine, but we only care about, is there enough room for five cars and an eight-foot buffer?
I, I understand what you're caring about. I was hoping that as a term of your approving the variance, you would find these, you know, concerns, reason for him to follow through with it. I mean, how... It, it's, it seems to me like he's ma, making a, a plot here, he's gonna stay 10 feet away. You were talking about putting some shrubs or something in...
Well, that's what he's required to do.
Eight feet and stuff like that. Like, to me, it, it makes sense that the line should be some, somehow identified by a pro. I feel like even this plot plan should be identified by a pro. Because you're going by his sketching that we don't even know, are these accurate?
Well, we actually would go by Jack, he would...
Oh, Jack does it.
Approve that, in saying that, okay, there is enough room or there's not enough room. But, that, my, my question to you guys too is, uh, about the, the property line too. I think that's something that either between you guys or whatever should be resolved, or, if there is that much of a question involved.
I could work, I'll talk to Mr. Hoven and I'll work with him on the property line.
Off of this line, there is enough room or not?
I, I'll get ahold of Mr. Hoven and we'll see if we could get the property line. I'll work with them. I mean, we've worked together before, I bought some from you.
I think we could put the fence back where it was.
Yes.
And you got about 20,000 dirt coming on my side of the fence.
I'll come over and we'll, we'll, we'll straighten that right off.
Yeah, that, yeah, well, well, yeah, we'll, we'll hold audience cover, yeah. Um, that, who, who owns the lot that's... I, I, I don't know if it's the same lot or if it's the, the adjoining lot there. There's a place you can get propane?
Yeah, that's...
Is that yours?
Uh, it technically is still mine, it's for lease, uh, lease purchase.
Okay, so you own that lot too, okay.
Now, is that on the left side of Theodore Street?
Yeah.
It's just further down.
It's the next lot.
Yeah.
It's just the next lot over.
Mm-hmm. But, uh, I didn't even mention that we were gonna do detailing in that garage at all. It's probably just gonna be mechanical work. So that's probably not gonna be an issue anyhow with that. And, uh, I have to read the stuff and I have to, that, I'm not gonna dump stuff where I have to, uh, uh, read it and kill myself either. So it's just common sense. Uh, other people have done it years ago. But, uh, I have to live with what's underground there now and everybody else in the valley there.
I have a question for the attorney. Do you know whether or not there's rules on washing cars outside in Scranton for a facility like his?
Do I know? No, I don't know. I'll be honest with you.
Okay. I, I guess, one of my concerns with the whole chemicals and washing outside is, is, I feel like there's rules on the books. Would that be something that could be researched to determine i, if, or it could, or could not happen?
Well, this, this is a CN district, which is neighborhood commercial. I'm not aware of anything in the ordinance that would prohibit that. And I have looked. And furthermore, I was gonna say that the plot plan that we have here, although I cannot say it's exact, but I did review it on-site, and I feel it's fairly accurate.
And what, would, uh, washing the dirt off cars have a problem with anyway?
As long as you have the right drainage.
Um, just washing, uh, everybody goes out and washes their house, washes the cars off and stuff from the dust from Kaiser Avenue. It's not like you're gonna tire, turn fire hoses on, it's just normal, uh, wash a car. That's all. That's what I was, wondering what he was getting about, about that.
Well, that's a valid question, and it's fair. So, my teachings taught me that your, uh, used car, new car facility is not allowed to do exterior washing. And so, they need a recycling center, it's kinda like a car wash, okay?
You're talking about doing motors and degreasing and all that stuff. This is just outside washing your car.
Well, even when you go to a car wash, I mean, you go to a car wash and they have a recycling center.
I don't think any of the other, um, car, or car lots on Kaiser Avenue have that. But then the other thing is, once again, through city planning, you have to have the right drainage when you pave it and stuff like that, so...
And again, I'm not really, uh, I can't think of anything in the ordinance that would prohibit it.
Right, it's allowed unless it's specifically prohibited, and I don't see anything that would specifically prohibit it.
I've also seen several car, cars being washed at several auto, of the used car lots driving down Kaiser Avenue. I, I don't know what their drainage situation is, but I've seen it, I've seen it happen.
And I know that it happens. Everybody does it. I guess that's my concern.
You definitely gonna clean this place out, the place all of them go for repair, all of them go...
Mm-hmm.
Paint the place, is that, is that your...
And remove, remove all of the...
Yeah, the, the real shop there.
Lack of a better word.
Yeah.
And Jack, you said that this all falls in the right ear, or that you watched what you mentioned?
Again, I, I think the plan is within the ordinance.
Do you think...
It may not be perfect, but...
Do you think number five though fits with the ordi, ordinance that he dictated to me?
Um, I don't, I don't have the sheet, you didn't give me the sheet.
Number five is how close to the road the cars can be parked. Is that the cars that he's selling or the cars that, for customers, or does it matter?
Cars for sale.
Cars for sale.
The cars that he's selling are further back, he has customer parking for that.
Well, what, what we go by is the right-of-way from Pendat. And I, I believe that that is within the right-of-way, because the right-of-way is from the middle of the road, not from the side of the road. So I believe it's 25 feet from the middle of the road. So he wouldn't be able to put anything in within 25 feet of the right-of-way.
Yeah, a lot of times...
Because it is a state highway.
Yeah, what, what you have to remember is the right-of-way for the highway might not be what's actually paved. Might be wider than that.
We run into that problem a lot on Kaiser Avenue.
Yeah, so...
And it's difficult to enforce, because there's many dealerships, not to interrupt them, but there's many dealerships to take advantage of that. And that is, in essence, I think what you're driving at, which is fair, a fair argument. And the, and the best thing I could say is, a call to me in my office would prompt me, because I'm out there all the time. I spent half of my day today with an attorney representing a, a car dealer over on Kaiser Avenue who is encroaching on the right-of-way. So, it's a common problem. And legitimate, by the way. Keep that in case you need it.
Mr. Williams, I just have one or two questions for you. Uh, your hours of operation?
Uh, usually eight to eight.
Are you going seven days a week, or five, four, three?
Uh, usually Saturdays will be, uh, from nine to two.
So you'll be close Sundays?
Sun, yeah, no Sundays.
Is that negotiable?
Excuse me?
I said, would those hours be negotiable? Because it seems like maybe the neighbors might wanna lesser hours.
I, I think if we can come to an agreement here on, on some of these things, maybe everything else could be worked out.
Yeah, that's no problem.
And you're...
I'm just going eight to eight, it could, most guys leave at 6 o'clock. But, uh, sometimes in the summer, if it's nice out, they hang around.
And one of their concerns that I, that I have to agree with them with, I know from some of the car lots throughout the city, you can't walk, the sidewalk is taken up by them. So, you'd be willing to pull your cars back, say, because you have a lot of room looking at your map. Pull your cars back eight, 10 feet, so there is a right-of-way there for people to walk.
Yeah, well, yeah. Yeah, well, yeah, it's gonna, so naturally that they can look at them, they'll buy them. So, I'm not gonna, there is a, Pendott put a new curb there.
Okay.
Like, if I put the cars right up to the front, the people would have to walk on Kaiser Avenue to look at the cars. So, obviously, I'm not gonna put them up that far. I'm gonna leave, you know, four or five foot before, which will help them out from, uh, her coming out looking through her left. Now, till they did the curb there, you guys had hedges that were ten foot tall that you couldn't see going to the right. No way till you guys just got the hedges removed by Pendott. And as soon as he called me about the truck, I moved it out of the way and stuff. Uh, I know it's hard to get out of there and it's, uh, I don't want her kids or her to get hurt. So, I'll work with you on anything.
That issue is enforceable. So, if the, there is an issue with the right-of-way, again, contact me and we'll, we'll take care of it.
Yeah. I'm not hard to get along with.
Anyone else here in the audience to give testimony?
I'll give Mr. Hoven my card.
I'll make a motion.
He can call me so I can fix that fence for him. Is that a second?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Gattens?
Yes.
Mr. Merks?
Yes.
Ms. Newcomb?
Um, I'm gonna say no only because of the car lot situation on Kaiser Avenue. I, I, I don't like to say no to businesses, but he currently owns the business there anyway.
Julie Nodden, Mr. Palmetessa? Chairman O'Neil?
Yes, with a vote four to one, it's been granted.
And Jack, the stipulation on that will be, what do we say, ten cars?
Ten cars.
Okay. We're, we're gonna take a two-minute break. Okay, the second case?
Agenda item number two, six twenty-eight Prospect Avenue.
Thank you, guys.
No problem. Okay, so you wanna raise your right hand? You solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth so help you God?
I do.
State your name and address, please.
My name is Kevin Califf. I live at two fifty-five Howard Avenue in Copac, New York.
Okay, you may proceed.
Uh, I acquired this six twenty-eight at a auction this past year. And, um, I've been going through the process of trying to find out everything that has to be done. And I've overcome a couple of hurdles and I found out that it also reverts to a single-family dwelling when it goes for auction. So, I have to come back in, to the zoning board and get permission to, what I wanna do is I wanna make it a three-family. Originally, it was a five-family. I'm looking to make it a three-family so they can be all decent respectable places to live with off-street parking. I believe you probably all have the little folders that my, uh, limited abilities prepared.
Um, actually, compared to what we've seen in the past, this is a pretty good preparation.
Well, thank you. Yeah, each, uh, each apartment would average, uh, about a thousand square feet. And there will be five parking spots in the rear of the facility. You've got an aerial picture there depicting where, uh, the parking would be located at. Each apartment will also have its own laundry room. Uh, first and second floors will each have three bedrooms. The third floor will have two bedrooms. There are at least two means of egress from each apartment, not listed on there, sorry about that. I didn't think about that till after the fact. And so.
Does he have enough for the five or would he be?
I got enough for the five.
What's that?
I got enough for the five with eighteen feet long, nine feet wide and a twelve-foot driveway.
Okay.
Up to one side, correct?
Driveway up the one side, right.
But where Lavell, um, court is, you're far enough off of the court?
Uh, yeah, I can, I'll deal with, um, exactly the stipulations you want, how far off the court because I have a lot of footage behind that building to put in this parking area.
Okay. The proposals for three units?
How far from the alleyway is the first car?
Four feet, four feet, if that's okay. I believe I'm required to have a four-foot buffer zone, so I imagine it'd be the same from the alley as it would be from the property lines.
Um, actually, he, he doesn't, uh.
Your game plan is to pull in and go to the garage.
Correct, correct.
Jack, how much buffer does he need on each side?
Actually, because he has less than six off-street parking spots, he doesn't need the full eight feet anymore. So, the four feet is.
I was considering it for four feet. I believe I may have pulled on that too.
Yeah, that, that is sufficient.
I got that information from Jack.
If it's six feet, if it's six cars are over, then you have to have eight feet.
The house that's on Willow Street, that's a buddy in your yard in the back, um, do you know if there's a fence between the properties out there?
There are no fences back there.
Do you plan on putting kind of buffer there so that the lights aren't shining to the back of that house?
I think as far as the lights, it'd be directional. As far as that goes, we can put blinders on them so we're not, uh, impacting right now. There are existing lights on that property in the back.
No, I'm, I'm talking about when your cars are pulling out of the lot in the back, so their headlights are coming to the property.
You know, to tell you the truth, I hadn't thought about that, but it'd be good to put a vinyl blind in there. Yeah, put a fence in there. I wouldn't, I know I wouldn't want it coming through me and I wanna be a good neighbor.
Right.
Do you have other properties in the city?
Uh, seventeen oh five North Main Avenue.
Now, do, do you have a property manager? Will there be a property manager for this house?
I have a, I have a local guy who takes care of my yard work and snow removal and he's also there for phone calls and emergencies.
Good, thank you.
You said you owned seventeen oh five North Main Avenue's?
Yes, I do.
And the yard will be paved?
The parking will be paved, yes.
Are you going to put some sort of a, there's, because I just lost the page, huh? There's twenty-five point nine feet from the back of the house to the end of the parking lot. What do you plan on putting to separate the yard from the parking lot?
Uh, just a concrete curb at the asphalt line.
And it's all grass beyond that?
Yeah, they need, you'd need to have a yard, you know, for all I know, I'll have somebody to have a kid that wanna, you know, have outside.
Lots of times say no because I don't like turning backyards into parking lots, but this, there's still twenty-five feet of yard, so.
Yeah, I don't believe in having a place that I wouldn't live in myself.
It's not plausible. If no one has a question, I'll make the motion. I made the motion.
Second?
Mr. Gattens?
I can vote yes. Normally, I don't vote yes for parking lots in the backyard, but I'm familiar with that area there and, uh, I think this case is a good fit for it, so yes.
Julie Nodden, Mr. Merks?
Yes.
Ms. Newcomb?
Yes.
Mr. Palmetessa?
Yes.
Chairman O'Neil?
Yes, with a vote five to zero, it's been granted and good luck.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Meeting adjourned.